I just lost my Zoom. I don't know why.
We can see you.
Yeah, I don't know why I just lost my Zoom connection.
We can hear you.
Okay, I'd like to call the laws, rules and ordinances committee into session. Tonight, we have a presentation by the Pogomire Group on zoning changes for the city of Fremont. And who is going to do the presentation?
I will, Paul and John. We'll have a joint team.
Okay.
Should we start?
Yep.
Okay, good. Well, thank you very much and good evening, everyone. This has been a culmination of about a year and a half of work. And what we did is we took a look at both the subdivision regulations and the zoning ordinance for the city of Fremont. And we updated both sets of laws. Next slide, please.
Oh, I'm.
Yeah, next slide.
Okay. There we go.
This is the code review committee that we met with. And I want to thank every single one of these people for all of their time and effort in working with us and providing feedback and also letting us know some of the nuances of the city of Fremont. So we're indebted to this fine group of folks. Next slide. Subdivision regulations. In essence, the five existing chapters remain. What we did is we updated all the references to the Ohio Revised Code and also deleted those portions that just didn't make any sense anymore and/or were obsolete. We also referenced this to the review of subdivisions within the three mile boundary of the city. That was in effect a few years ago. It's no longer in effect in that the reason being that Sandusky County has put together a regional planning commission. And they also adopted subdivision regulations. So this was for the area within three miles of the boundaries of the city. So we deleted all that verbiage and text from the subdivision regs. Next slide, please. We added some definitions to the definitions section. We're not requiring that all utilities be underground in all new subdivisions. And we also added an insurance provision to basically help the city in case something happens during the construction of the improvements in the subdivision regs. The city will be protected. So that was an additional provision that we added to the subdivision regs. Next slide, please. We deleted the section where it required a public review. This was optional. It's not required by the Ohio Revised Code, so we took that off. Of importance is the fees. The current fee schedules were 49 years old. We felt that we needed to upgrade. You needed to upgrade the fees that you'll charge developers for the for the city to actually review the Platts, the plans, specifications, and also to provide inspection of the improvements within the subdivisions. So this is a recommendation that we've made, and this would be in par with a lot of the similar communities around Fremont. Next slide, please. For some of the zoning changes, I'm going to have John Whitmer discuss these.
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is John Whitmer, the Pogomire Design Group. And for the zoning changes, I think first I want to start out with just the overall picture. We did some reorganizing of your code materials around four basic areas. First is introductory materials, then followed by district and use provisions, then development standards, and then finally code administration. Your new code has 30 chapters and it's up from about from 23 chapters in your current code. Erica, next slide. The changes to for the introductory materials. The first chapter, 1121, has your introductory provisions. It has some of us already there in 1121, but also consolidates other what we consider introductory materials from other chapters, such as the zoning map interpretation and application. And we added where you can find the zoning map online. Many communities do that now. And it's online. You know, the map to your to your right there is in the engineering and zoning department. And you also can get zoning by the individual parcel from the county auditor's office. So we provided that information in the zoning code. Erica, next slide. Use district provisions. We only made one change in the your current list of zoning districts. And that was a name change from the hospital district to the institutional campus. We felt that was a better description of that of that zoning district, given that Terratech is now a could possibly be a institutional campus someday. Chapter 1127, your use classification table. We updated that and tried to make it a little clearer and user friendly. We separated manufactured homes and travel trailers into two chapters. We added institutional uses to the plan unit development. And we added a new chapter, 1135, regulating small cell facilities to address 5G technology. Erica, next slide. Zoning changes to the use district provisions. We added a review of fiber optics in the wireless telecommunications facilities, which is chapter 1133. Erica, next slide. Now we come into an area where we've made a lot of additions to your zoning code, sort of updating some new uses that are out there. Or ones that we were told by Brian and Erica, you had difficulties regulating. So we, in the district use provisions, we added chickens and bees. We added microbreweries, which is a new use out there for restaurants. Donation bins is an area that a lot of communities want to regulate the abuse of donation bins, like when they start overflowing. Now we have some set of regulations that can be enforced. Outdoor furnaces, in case someone asks for that, you have some criteria now. It needs one acre. They're not really very urban friendly because of the smell. So we try to keep that to larger parcels. Outdoor bulk storage, again, your Erica and Brian said you have some problems dealing with outdoors bulk storage. So we have updated those regulations. Outdoor sales, this would be sales in parking lot areas, some minimal regulations there to control that. That gets out of hand. Most communities now regulate solar panels, just a set of regulations that we see around the state and in fact around the country. There's fairly boilerplate now how to regulate solar panels. And also from Erica and Brian, you wanted some tougher regulations or new regulations dealing with trash recycling containers. Be sure that they're moved to storage areas or behind the house so that they're not out in the street being on sight like. Erica, next page. Fremont is going to be leading the state. Just a very handful of communities in the state regulate electric vehicles. I was surprised that this is a new area for me also that Erica was starting to get some inquiries about it. So we added some regulations based on Columbus and some other communities that are pioneering this in Ohio. The main thing is that we regulate some very basic safety regulations. From that graphic on the right, you see the cord. Well, it says that the cord has to be on a bar tied up afterwards to the to the charging tower there. So it does become a cord nuisance sticking out into the street. So now you have some regulations to regulate that when you start seeing charging stations. And then the other item that we added for electric vehicle is that the question comes up if a reserved space can be counted towards your required parking. And the answer is yes. Most communities to encourage businesses to add it. Adding a electric vehicle only parking space does not take away from your minimum required parking. There's it can be counted towards minimum required. So that question comes up, your code addresses it. Next slide. Erica, next, next slide. Continuing with development standards. We updated the intensity and the national standards, adding some graphics and illustrations. But your basic, what in your current code are called bulk and height. Bulk or area regulations pretty much remain the same. I just added some graphics to help illustrate it. Same thing for your landscape chapter. We did not make any basic changes to your code that you adopted a few years ago. We found that very adequate for Fremont. We did change it from optional to it's now required that you follow your landscape chapter. And we added some graphics to help explain some of the requirements. For off-street parking requirements. We put that into a table, making a little bit more user friendly. And also, where possible, we tried to follow land uses table carries over in the parking table so that you can see some relationship between uses and parking, parking requirements. One important point here is reduced retail parking by about one third. For businesses under 2,000 square feet, your current standard is 200. One space for every 200, we increased that to one to 300 for all retail parking. That follows trends in most communities. I mentioned that you can count electric vehicle parking towards your minimum required spaces. Your code did not have stacking requirements for restaurants and banks for drive-through facilities. Almost all communities have that now, and we felt that you needed to add that for Fremont. We strengthened the regulations of storage of recreational vehicles. So that was something that Erica and Brian wanted to have better regulations or more clear regulations to be able to enforce that. Same for temporary container regulations. We added new provisions or added provisions that you did not have before of when you're required to do a traffic impact study for large institutional or retail uses. And we also added traffic access management requirements. And these are fairly standard, other place for other communities in Ohio and adopted them for Fremont. Moving on, we're going into the sign code, and that's Paul's area.
Yeah, next slide. Yeah. Took a look at the sign ordinance, and we rebanted by adding the new types of signs that are out there now. But more importantly, there was a Supreme Court decision in 2015. It was regarding a church versus a community in Arizona. Reed versus Gilbert, Reverend Reed and the city of Gilbert. And the city had different timeframes for their different temporary signs. For political signs and real estate signs that a certain limit. For event signs, they had a different time limit. And what happened is this pastor of this church did not have a specific building. So he had to put signs out before he had a service every Sunday. And the place of the service changed from time to time. So he had to put signs out. But the city had a requirement that the sign could only go up certain timeframe before the event. And they had to be taken down at a certain timeframe after the event. Well, the poor pastor did not have good volunteers, so he was cited over and over and over. Well, finally, he got tired of it. An attorney came to his side. He sued the city. Won. The case went all the way up to Supreme Court. Basically, the Supreme Court said that he was discriminated against because the city had different time periods for their signs. So now in regards to free speech, you cannot mention any type of content for signage. You can only regulate the number of signs, the size of the signs, and the location of the signs. Not regulate any of the the content. Has to be content neutral. So we included all those changes in Fremont's zoning code. The other issue that we had a lot of discussion with is architectural design standards. It was decided that the city of Fremont will institute some middle-of-the-road architectural design standards for commercial buildings, multifamily buildings. And the our old district, the institutional campus districts, and they will review them. And then the next slide, please. We will, what we're trying to do is to encourage developers that they're going to build new buildings in the city of Fremont. They're going to look nice. The facades are going to be recessed. They're going to have a good color scheme and also material will be important. And you're going to take a look at the type of building when they built it. They're going to have like a capstone at the very top, the body of the building and a base. And ideally with different type of material, it's going to look different. And then with the recess and the breaking up of the full walls with windows, it's going to look a lot better. Next slide. The photograph on the left shows the, you know, the roof lines, not all straight through, but at least, you know, with similar height. And again, with the with the recess, it just makes it a lot better. We're not going to allow like the middle building with the manster type roof would not be allowed. Also, we want to screen the HVAC systems on roofs. Again, by having some parapet walls, you know, built to kind of screen those. So overall, you're going to have a lot better looking aesthetically, a better look at buildings within your commercial areas. Next slide. Because the city already has an architectural review board for the downtown historic district. These architectural design standards will be exempt with the for the for the architectural review board area. And that's because that review board will make the determination on the the design of those buildings. Of importance, we took a standalone ordinance that the city had for the design review commission. The old chapter 148. And we moved it into the city zoning code into chapter 1169. So therefore, it's part of the zoning code, part of the regulations is through an overlay zoning process. But I think it makes a lot of sense. And now it's included, you know, within the design, within the zoning for the city. And we work closely with.
John.
Eric, Paul.
Yeah. Next slide.
Okay. Continuing with the I need to change my microphone. Continuing with the development standards. We're proposing a new chapter, 1153, titled environmental performance standards. And what this does is compile all the applicable environmental regulations into one place. A lot of them you already had in your code, but it puts them all in one place, covering airborne emissions, ditch maintenance, excavation protection, explosive material. Added references to your flood hazard section elsewhere in your municipal code. What's new is some lighting and noise criteria. Urban soils, sedimentation, and I think vibration is new. So you have in one place all your environmental protection standards that usually fall in a zoning code. We added a reserve chapter for the storm water management that's being prepared by the city engineer. Next slide. Now we're moving into code administration. This is an area where all of the sections record that deal with the administration of the code are found. The first is a new chapter called common review standards. It outlines the application procedures and has your section on fees for all requests. So it's all in one central point, how you do procedures, such as how to conduct a public hearing, continuation of public hearing, and people who speak have to give their name, address. So it gives you a lot of procedures that's common to all your public meetings and public hearings. We also added a that building permits must conform with the zoning ordinance. Sandusky County is in the process of adopting a county building code. And my understanding is that Fremont will contract with the county to enforce that. And so your zoning code needs to add a provision that building permits and the zoning approvals need to be meshed and be in conformity with each other. And technically, you probably achieve that also in your memorandum of agreement or some whatever instrument that you contract with the county would have probably have that same kind of provision. We're adding a new chapter, site plan review. You sort of had hits and misses, a site plan review by the planning commission. Now, all new multifamily projects and commercial, non-residential, so commercial institutional now do require site plan review. And it's be triggered by for also for a substantial expansion of same uses. There's a table that shows what percentage of expansion would trigger a site plan review. Because of site plan review responsibility of the planning commission, we felt that in order to do that plan review properly, you really need 60 days to do those reviews to get comments back from reviewing agencies if you need those. So the review time for the planning commission is being increased from 30 days to 60 days. This is the only procedural or administrative change that we're making. It's the most substantial one that we're increasing the number of days from 30 to 60. To be clear, with home occupation certificates, violators. The or zoning appeals can revoke a home occupation certificate if they violate the conditions of approval or the conditions for using a a home occupation regulations that are in your code. Erica, next slide. A new sort of a catch-all development review procedure, chapter 1171. Institutional campus district requires the adoption of a master plan. And also, from time to time, a lot of times a mortgage company, when there's a new mortgage taken out on a commercial or industrial property, they will want zoning verification letters by just briefly describing that you a procedure for issuing those letters by your zoning inspector. It also means that you can collect a fee, either a flat fee or a hourly fee to prepare those letters. It can take some time for you to go back and do the research to show that a property is incomplete, conformant with the zoning code or what parts are not conforming. For updating development and decision-making bodies, not very many changes there. Was titled, Your Old Code, 1155 Enforcement. Force has been moved elsewhere, and so it's retitled Decision-Making Bodies. So the main thing that we did was just updated incorporating the architectural review board. But basically, and also site plan review responsibility. So it's just tweaking your current descriptions of your decision-making bodies. Erica, next page or next slide. Chapter 1177 now has all your enforcement violations and penalties in it. And discussion with Erica and Brian, we, some communities have this, and we are proposing to that you now withhold new or additional permits or certificates to owners or applicants that have existing violations on their land or property or buildings. Again, another tool in your enforcement box, toolbox, to have difficult property owners to conform. So if they want to do something with the property, go back and clean up or conform with the zoning code before you before we all consider making a change to your to your property. And then finally, we've updated the definitions and terminology where necessary. Most of those changes conform to your use categories. If you have a use in your use table, there's now a corresponding definition that further expands or explains that. So you can better understand when a use comes in exactly where it will fit in your use table. We now have definitions for everything. And going on to the next, we have questions from the zoning commission.
So does anybody in the laws, rules and ordinance committee have any questions regarding any of these changes or any of the slides?
I think you should also received a three-page memo, which basically listed a lot of the changes that we went over in the PowerPoint. Right.
If anyone has any questions in the meantime, you can contact me in the office, and I can go over any of the changes with you. Or if you have any concerns or if you have any citizens that have any questions and they've been listening or anything like that, just go ahead and contact me. And I'm available.
Gentlemen, thank you for your time and your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is amazing.
Can we ask a couple inquiries here?
Yes. I wanted to make an inquiry as relates to the choice of the use of maize and shells in your section 1159 zoning text and map administration. And I had some concern regarding the plan commission review and recommendations, section E1 at page 164. Are you with me?
Yeah. We're on page 164.
So 164 E1. I'm curious, I'm curious why the commission may hold a public hearing on a proposed amendment versus shall hold a meeting with regards to a change that's proposed within that section. Okay. What is this?
Yeah, their higher revised code requires a public hearing by city council.
I understand that.
And for the commission, for the zoning commission, you may hold a public hearing or just a public. Okay, you hold a public meeting, you do not need to advertise as you would for for a council meeting on a zone change. But if you do decide to hold a public hearing, and that would probably be for a controversial application that you felt needed a greater or higher degree or level of public knowledge and participation. You could, you're, you can always hold a public hearing. And if you do, then you have to follow the publication requirement of advertising a paper.
And I see that. I see that. But my, my point is. And I see that. I see that. But my, my point is, you know, if we're starting the review process in the plan commission and it's the first time the public has an opportunity to participate in the process, the spirit of transparency, increase public awareness, increase public input into a system. Would, is it possible to incorporate the word shell?
Yes. Yeah, I, to give you an example, the community that I worked with or was employed by for many years, the city of Toledo, requires a public hearing for the planning commission cases that they that they hear. So there's nothing to prevent you from having a higher standard or a higher degree of transparency than the Ohio revised code requires. The high vice code is a minimum, minimum, you can always have a higher degree of of notification.
Next question on that same section, it really, it relates to notifications in general. One of the comments that you made and the reasons why we were doing the review was to avoid and eliminate obsolete materials. Your draft contains what I view as a blatantly obsolete notification provisions. Newspaper publications in Fremont, Sandusky County, Ohio, circulation has dropped by 70%. And yeah.
Yeah, I can address that again. I 100% agree with you, but their Ohio revised code has not changed. So you have to at a minimum do what their Ohio revised code requires, which is putting it in a newspaper of general circulation. So you cannot get out of doing that even if, you know, as you said, circulation is down 70%.
However, we can, we could add to this section, a requirement that publication be on the city website or some other.
And I can give you two perspectives on that. One is if you put it in your zoning code, you have to say, put a notice on the, you know, on the internet, others underneath the Fremont webpage. You must do it. If you fail to do it and it's in your zoning code, then a party of interest can go to common police court and say, you did not follow procedure, your action is invalid because you did not do public notice.
Would you agree with me? Yeah. So
do it.
Yeah, I understand. So one of the choices the community needs to make in terms of adopting its language here is how do they want to publish notices that may affect individuals' property ownership, the quality of life, their neighborhood use? And part of that is obviously notifications and stuff are those issues, right? I mean, that's why we do them so they can participate. So one of the things that our community might want to look at would be that issue of plant commission notification, knowing that we could make a shell, knowing that we could incorporate notification within our city's webpage, which has become, from what I can see, the place where most people nowadays get their news about changes and circumstances within our governmental entities. So we could do that within this code, right?
Yes, there's nothing to prevent you from doing it in addition to what is minimally required in your code.
Okay, thank you.
Same thing for say, notice of adjacent neighbors, you know, within adjacent or across the street is how your code reads because that's how the Ohio revised code reads. That doesn't mean that in a case that you know is going to be controversial, you can always go several parcels deeper or up and down a street with your notifications. There's nothing to prevent you from doing more than that.
Okay.
And also some communities require a posting on the subject parcel that's under consideration for a say, a zone change to be posted on that property. So there's other further degrees of transparency. Just be aware, if you put it in your code, you must follow it even if the state has less. As soon as you put it in your code, you must do it.
Okay. So an inquiry then, and one of the things that I saw a problem is, let's say we use May in some of these sections. One of the things that's absent is the factors or considerations that a body politic might make regarding whether or not the matter is of significant public support. I think the or some public interest as you described. And then the absence of any kind of factors or considerations, issues of consideration. Boy, that really, really leaves it as a quite arbitrary determination by a small group of people for our community. Have you ever done in that like plant commission review and recommendation where if May is included, have you provided factoring? What is, when is it May and when is it shall like, you know, a hybrid version?
Yeah. Some communities will call out what's called a well, let's take zoning changes to begin with. Since that's straightforward, all zoning changes are pretty much handled the same. Some communities will require that the developer hold a public meeting in a neutral location to just, just to describe and hear complaints. So that's one transparency that some codes require the applicant to hold a public, you know, a public interest meeting. Another is just, it goes into describing what's called a major or a minor, say a site plan. After at a certain scale of size of development, then a public, you know, a public hearing must be held or the developer must meet with the neighbors. And as set by criteria for a smaller community like Fremont, we did not make that distinction.
Okay.
Since instead of doing some site plan approvals administratively by the zoning inspector or in some communities by the planning director. Those small ones are done administratively and never come to the planning commission. And then when larger ones do go to the planning commission, you know, they have that higher degree of transparency and requirement of notice and perhaps a developer meeting. For a small community where a zoning commission wants to and has the time, they review all site plans. So we haven't made that criteria of major and minor, but that's how you would just decide when to bring out a higher degree of transparency and notification.
Thank you. Add a question under section H, part E, section H at the bottom of page 164. So there's the, there's the shall provisions contained in the notice to property owners by city council.
Yes.
However, there's a provision, the second to last sentence, failure to deliver the notification as provided shall not invalidate any such amendment. Would you agree with me that putting that provision in basically neuters the shall requirement?
It does not. This is a boilerplate that you'll find in 99% of Ohio zoning codes, it's from the state law. And it's put in there more for, for the procedural error that may happen if some reason the mail is not delivered. It protects you from, from a, that something is beyond the city's control after a notice leaves leaves the city and goes into, say, the US mail. And that's out of the higher vice code and it's something I would recommend putting in there. Again, is to protect you from a lawsuit saying, I did not receive notice. The state law says it's presumed that notice was given when you sent that out. So it it is written into the higher vice code and I would suggest keeping that language.
But it could be removed. Is that correct?
It could be removed, but by removing it, a property, adjacent property owner will say, I did not receive notice of the zone change next door to me. You did not follow proper procedure. I'm going to common police court and asking the court to order the city to start the hearing process all over again.
And there, and, and you agree with me, there, there are simple methods by which notification can be assured to property owners, including various forms of either certified mail or registered mail that could be written into this so that, you know, I mean, registered mail is the postman coming by or past postwoman saying, I dropped it at the house. Certified mail says someone's got to sign for it. So for example, in our community, and I'm talking about the neighbors related to Mulberry Street. If there was a registered mail requirement, well, then the, we would have the proof that delivery was made to the residents across the street and adjoining properties. So, you know, versus like a certified mail provision.
Yes, you can add a certified mail provision that would be above the minimum standard of their high advice code. You can always go higher standard than the code nevertheless.
Right.
Also, but realize that that would increase your cost of administering the code.
Potentially, yeah, yeah, okay. Okay. I just had, I think a couple other questions. I, and thank you for, by the way, mentioning that the zoning map is available. Is that available online now so that?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and it's, it's set up so we can zoom in to streets and so on?
I'm not sure about the resolution. It was fine on, on my screen, the couple of, you know, during our meetings, Erica or Brian would mention a specific parcel, I was always able to zoom in and find that property. So I say that I think the resolution for me was fine.
Very good. And at the very worst, at the very worst, we can go to the auditor site and check the
Yes.
Okay, very good. And then
But realize the auditor is parcel map, not a zoning map.
Correct.
Parcel information, not a zoning map.
Okay, okay. So you can get the address, get the parcel number and you basically Do you guys have anything else you want to ask? Oh, yeah. We had, there was a question on a corner clearance issue. This is at 103, page 103. Dennis Hosselbach had an inquiry on this.
In reading this, there seems to be a conflict between paragraph G on 103 and section 1147 and 1147.16 on page 133, 131. In that I believe the intent of both of them is to have the corner clearance refer to the area of the lot outside of the corporate or outside of the right of way.
Yes.
You see what I'm saying? And on, on G, it says corner, corner lot across the corner lot and it refers to corner lot a couple times on there. But on the, on the graphic, it looks like it's the pavement and not the right of way.
I would agree that the graphic is very generic and, and does not have all the labeling that you might, you might want to have with it.
Okay, so you're, you're saying the intent is to cover the corner of that property.
Okay, there's a general provision, I think at the beginning of the, of the code that states whenever there's a disagreement or something that's not clear between the text and the graphic, the text controls. So if there, if you're, if there's something that, you know, the graphic isn't telling you, but the paragraph does, you have to rely on the text paragraph.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
We can also improve on that graphic as well on page 103 to clear that up.
Okay, yeah, that, that would be good.
Okay.
Before we finish at 7:30, I'm wondering what the thoughts are of, this is Joe Abrecht, what the thoughts are of this committee with reference to suggested amendments from the public as it relates to presentation to council. You know, there, I think, I think it might bear some interest in having some of these questions regarding notification, regarding the maize and shell stuff and publication questions so that, you know, we bring our public along and give them an opportunity to be heard so that we maintain continued confidence in both our city government and the objectives of both the sometimes competing interests and sometimes unified interests that might occur within a street neighborhood and so on. And so I guess what I'm inquiring about is whether if this, is this ordinance modification scheduled for a first hearing? Or is it going to be deferred so that this committee might have further discussion regarding some of the issues that might be contained within this discussion?
There's a public hearing on the 19th at 6:30 prior to council. So if anyone has any concern, they can come to the public hearing and they can, you know, express concerns there.
On the, on November 19th?
Yeah.
And
that's scheduled council is November 19th and there's a public hearing at 6:30 for these zoning changes.
Okay, and I guess I'd ask Jamie and John, is, 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 is the first reading on this going to happen then after the public hearing?
It will be that same night.
Oh, I see. Okay, but it would be after.
Yeah, it'll be a public hearings at 6:30 and then the first reading of the ordinance for this zoning amendment will be on the agenda that evening.
Okay, do you think that? I'm sorry. And so what, I guess what I would wonder and just out of procedural respect, if people come in and raise concerns and questions on the 19th and your first hearing is that night, how might suggested changes be incorporated in the resolution between a meeting at 6:30 and a resolutions first reading at 7:30? Might it not make sense to have the first reading move back into the first week of December? So as to provide the citizenry with an opportunity to itemize and meet with their city council members and give opportunity and because otherwise you have a public hearing. Okay, I heard you, we're going forward. You basically make and neuter the public hearing.
Well, it's been advertised for over 30 days, so.
Well, I understand that, but, but, you know, right now is this first committee, we're first hearing from you guys about what it contains as a citizenry. And then you're going to hold a public hearing where you have the opportunity for people to give input, but you have no mechanism by which the public's input can be incorporated or allow modification. I mean, you know, look, guys, we're talking about trans, we're talking about transparency. We're talking about changing things that affect people's neighborhoods, live streets, homes, backyards, trash containers, signs. I mean, come on, let's give this thing a little bit of time so that once this thing starts getting advertised and people start understanding what it is these things start doing. so that once this thing starts getting advertised and people start understanding what it is these things start doing, you got to give people a chance to respond. And the way you're 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 proceeding on this, that's not happening. I mean, I like a lot of what you're doing, but.
No, those are all very valid points, Joe. Those are all very valid points, and I think those are obviously, honestly, I'm not prepared to give you an answer to your your inquiries because these are your questions that I actually looked at other parts of this and had questions and not this particular point. So this is very valid. And I think that's a discussion between now and November 19th that we need to have. I agree.
Well, just to just an issue that, you know, I mean, I and I have to compliment Pogomar. I thought you guys did a great job with this. I mean, there's there's a lot of real good thought. It's great to see the incorporation of your experience across the state, moving us forward as a community, you know, to embrace a lot of new concepts and give us opportunity to grow as a community. But I, you know, it's as a member of the public and now a a very happy member of the city of Fremont, I I just would want to make sure that, hey, if nobody shows up and nobody comments, great. But if they do and suggestions and ideas are made, there there needs to be, those kind of things should be cataloged. In my opinion, brought back to this committee. Hey, do we accept this? Do we reject that? And then take it to council after there's an opportunity for public discourse and in public participation.
I have I just have a quick, I have a quick question, just little curiosity. Some of your comments about the shall and may, you know, are honestly, technical terms that I think the average person may not pay attention to those exact terms in in what what they've been presented. Does that cause a real serious impediment to your argument of challenging? That makes sense?
Well, look, I.
Act that says like, you know, newspaper and doesn't give any other like social media references is that? Do you foresee that as being a a serious impediment to?
I do.
Process.
Yeah, John, I do. I, yeah, I do.
I'm asking out of curiosity.
Yeah, I I answered the question, yes.
Okay.
And the reason I say that is I, in my neighborhood, I think three people get the newspaper.
Okay.
And, you know, you know, there was a time when we all got it. There isn't that time when we don't. And the conversation, you guys all know, the conversation for interested people originates out of the city's website and compliments to you guys, you know, for doing that. People are watching that, and we should encourage that even more. And it creates, in my opinion, easier access, more democratic participation. Hopefully, we maybe will move toward a city-based web, you know, net where everybody would have access to it and all those kind of things. And but let's think about the future and expand, you know, the reach that we're going to have. Hey, how many people are wearing eye watches and how many people and get their news, you know, on their watches and now on their cell phones and all that kind of stuff? I mean, accessibility and public information creates confidence in in city government. And we know that on both the state and and national level. I mean, look at Governor DeWine and and COVID. I mean, access to information is what creates confidence in our government. And the more we can do to create access to give people meaningful input into our processes are what give people confidence. We may not always agree. We may, but all we want to do is have a fair opportunity to be heard.
Right. And and I I have a devil devil's advocate question, just to be a devil's advocate. Your comment on section H on page 164, failure to deliver notifications provided in this section shall not invalidate any such amendment. From me, from your legal background, have you ever seen this as a problem?
Have I seen? Well, let me give you an example.
Just, you know, like I had an experience. I mean, is that?
Yes, so, okay, so so we call that due process. Okay. Okay, so when I sue somebody, the courts require us to make sure that somebody gets fair notice. We require the highest level, which is a certified mail or personal delivery. Okay? In city government, I could certainly see at least, you know, it says, there shall be notification. But if we don't give a notification, who cares? That's in effect what that provision says. Okay?
Can I intersect here? Your your, you would have the name list that the zoning inspector would have on file with that case that would show that you made notification within the control of the city. So you would provide documents to the court showing that such and so and so was on the name list and that and that mailing was made per a notation in in the file.
Yeah. Yeah, we we've, you know, we've all had a great experience about wondering about the competency of the postal services election cycle and deliberate non-delivery of materials is not giving me a lot of confidence, gentlemen and ladies. And so as a consequence, you know, a heightened level, if you're going to change people's neighborhoods, if you're going to affect people's streets, the way in which they've come to rely and 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 build and invest in their house and neighborhood, there should be a requirement of the city to make sure that, or the developer, to make sure that notice gets done. We build and invest. If we look at the total investment of residential properties in this community, it exceeds most commercial and industrial developments if we totaled it all up. And we as residents should have the ability to know that if someone's going to change things, we got to be told. And we got to know and at least have an opportunity to be heard. And if you don't tell us, then shame on you, and you got to start again. And the burden for that is not on the city, the burden's on the developer. And if the developer has to start all over again, well, guess what? So so too bad. If you screwed up, you didn't check your dots, your lawyer didn't do it, then you start over and you haven't given him a refund on the or the engineer, you haven't give you a refund for the redo.
Erica, is it a big deal if we had the public hearing on the 19th and didn't? And then therefore moved the first reading back to the third? Is that? I mean, is that a big deal? Does that screw any timelines up that we have to adhere to?
No, I don't think so. I can look for it. I don't think so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I mean.
When he's talking about the certified mail.
We're talking about two different. Bob's talking about something else.
Yeah, I I really think as a council, you have two options. One, I don't think it hurts anything if you have the public hearing on the 19th and then go for a first reading on the third. I think our hope was to have it passed before the end of the year and it's legislation enacted, ready to go in in 21. But if we don't vote on it or council doesn't vote on it till January 7th, 2021, which would then, you know, that would be the three readings starting in December, I I don't think that's a big deal. You know, the other option is, you know, I don't know how hard it is to amend the ordinance adopting these zoning regulations between the the three public readings.
I think you can do that, but that's a Jim Melli question, and I don't know if he's on now. I can't see the whole, you know, stream, but that's a Jim Melli.
I'm on here. I'm on here.
I believe you can amend it as as it's going through the readings.
Yes, we can. We can. This is Law Director Melli. Yes, we can make amendments to different various items and make the changes. We talked about that in several of the other meetings that we have when we were putting this all together.
But you don't technically have to delay the the first reading, but that's up to you guys.
Yeah, can we can we make amendments within the first reading?
Yes.
There is a timetable?
Okay.
Don't you think we should wait? I mean, in all fairness to the public, the public has a right to voice their opinion, and there's no reason why we can't wait until the first December meeting to start the readings on this.
I would agree with that.
I'm fine with that.
I would agree with that.
I could I can support that as well. I thanks, everybody. I just think that makes, you know, all of the work all of us are doing just more inclusive and giving people an opportunity.
No, you're right, Joe. Appreciate your comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joe.
Oh, you guys are, hey, this is wonderful. This is a great way to, you know, have a conversation. Yeah. And even if you would have disagreed, I would still would have said that.
Okay, I think we're reaching the end of our time. So any other questions before we close?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. And thank you, Pogomar, for your presentation and appreciate all the hard work you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that work.
Thank you. We are now done with the open hearing.
Okay, so we'll have, we'll start this council meeting in five minutes.
Thanks, Jamie.
For a moment of silent prayer and the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Bob, are you doing the? I don't see Stevie tonight.
Uh, I was not aware that I was doing it tonight. I I mean, I knew I had had it set up last time. I wasn't aware that I was on for for two meetings in a row.
No, I wasn't either, but I don't see Stevie on here.
She came and picked up the stuff earlier today from us.
Okay.
Maybe someone should give her a call. Check up on her.
She's not in the waiting room or anything weird or trying to call in?
I'll get my phone.
Somebody's connecting the audio. Oh, that's an oak.
We keeping you up, Christopher?
Uh, still catching up on sleep. It's time change, though, you know, that's arguably six.
Kids these days, counseling sleek, I don't know.
I know. They couldn't hang with us, could they?
If I have a sheet, I can do it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Let me, just let me kind of.
Get in the zone.
All right, we taking attendance then, Jamie?
Yeah, bro call.
All right, Smith?
Here.
Good, Addy?
Here.
Elder?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Here.
Wees?
Here.
Sleek?
Here.
Okay.
Give me just a second here so I can.
Hold on a minute, Stevie's calling. Hello? Okay. Okay. Thanks, that's okay. Bye bye. She's having trouble logging on, so she's going to try another computer, but we're going to proceed. In the meantime, so council has a copy of the minutes from the last meeting and has had a chance to review them. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? No, then they'll stand as they are. Council also has a copy of the agenda. Is there anything to add or remove from the agenda tonight? No? For tonight's meetings, we'll have all the readings. If you have a question or like would like to make a comment, please raise your hand and I'll call on you. I'll do the same with the public. If the public would like to speak, I'll give them the opportunity as well. So we'll go ahead and start the readings.
Okay, agenda item number one, third reading of a resolution supporting an essential workers' bill of rights.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Chris Leibold moves to adopt. And Jim Elder, John Elder, I'm sorry. Seconds. Are there any questions on or comments on the adoption of this essential workers' bill of rights?
I would like to make a comment.
Okay.
Okay, after reading all the letters from the many companies and businesses in town that we have received today, which Bob Gross has emailed us copies of them, it helps to confirm that we must not pass this resolution. I urge a no vote. Even though it is just a resolution, this could hurt Fremont businesses and our relationships with them. We need our businesses to remain here and grow here. These are our employers of our residents. This is what keeps our Fremont going. By passing this resolution, we may hinder the growth of industry. If a company is thinking of expanding, this resolution will not encourage them to do so. We cannot discourage industry coming to this area or expanding their current company in Fremont. We want industry to grow here so that they can provide employment to everybody, not just to essential workers. They must base their wages on experience and skills, not on a robust premium compensation. If we pressure our employers for a robust premium compensation, premium compensation, our essential workers and other employees may be left without employment when the company starts to reduce their staff or even worse, decide to move from this area. There have been cities around here that have adopted this resolution, but just because they have adopted this resolution doesn't mean we have to. One side does not fit all in this case. It does not fit in Fremont. Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment or a statement they'd like to make? Yes, Christine?
So I did read the letter that I believe that Monica had sent. And she did mention, you know, that the resolution does not have the force of an ordinance. However, I do feel that if many resolutions in the area or different towns were to pass, then things like this can become law. So and I do feel like there is a lot in this that would hinder potential businesses to come to our area. And I think we want to make Fremont a business-friendly community, so I urge to vote no as well.
Anyone else, anybody from the public like to speak on this?
Hi, this is Monica Ramirez. I would like to speak on this, please.
Okay.
Great. First, thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to read the letter that that Ms. Weiss mentioned into the record. And then I have some responses based on what was just shared. Dated November 5, 2020. Dear Honorable Fremont City Council Members, I'm writing on behalf of Justice for Migrant Women, a nonprofit organization with its headquarters in Fremont. In the lead up to the third reading of the Essential Worker Resolution that was presented to the Fremont City Council in October, we are grateful for your willingness to hear from community members about why honoring essential workers through this resolution is important. The Fremont City Essential Workers Resolution would be a formal expression by the political leaders who would like to proclaim their support of and for thousands of Fremont City residents and individuals employed in essential occupations during this COVID-19 pandemic who put their health and their lives on the line in order to meet the needs of our community during this crisis. Based on the valuable previous conversation at the prior council meetings pertinent to this resolution, we learned about some concerns from business owners and other community members particularly related to the potential cost that individuals feared might be created by this resolution. I believe these concerns could be allied with some clarification about what this resolution is and what it isn't. Thank you for the opportunity to address these matters. First, I hope to clear up confusion about the purpose and the function of this resolution. As you know, a resolution does not have the force of an ordinance. It does not change the law, legal standards, or obligations of any Fremont City community member. It does not change the law, legal standards, or obligations of any Fremont city community member or business. It is an important formal statement of support for essential workers, but does not create binding legal requirements. Second, there are no costs to local businesses stemming from this essential worker resolution because it does not change any employment law requirements. Federal and state employment laws create workplace rights and obligations. So even if the city council chose to enact an ordinance as opposed to a resolution, that ordinance would have to comply with federal and state law. Cities can make the law better for workers through ordinances, but the language under consideration by the Fremont City Council is a resolution and not a new law. Finally, I want to address the conversation about whether the language in the resolution is vague. I think that this concern has emerged specifically related to the need to clarify the difference between an ordinance and a resolution. If an ordinance or a state or federal law were to be introduced, there would be an entire process required to define what every provision means, including its scope and reach. These would be found in a definition section of a bill. I hope that the city council members make clear to Fremont residents and business leaders the difference between a resolution and an ordinance, since there appears to be incomplete or inaccurate information that is fueling these concerns. Based on the discussion to date, it appears that there are important considerations and clarifications for the council members and the public at large. Given this, I feel especially important to speak to these issues. The Fremont City Council has the esteemed honor of representing the citizens of our community and businesses located within Fremont city limits. One of its important functions is to ensure that community members have complete and accurate information. Similarly, city employees have the duty to provide Fremont residents and businesses with accurate and complete information, not to mention the responsibility to correct misinformation when it becomes aware of such inaccuracies. The resolution contains language related to the kinds of benefits that could help essential workers during this time. The city of Fremont provided support and benefits to municipal workers during the pandemic. This is commendable. Some businesses went above and beyond to do the same. The federal and state governments provided resources, money and other aid to cities, businesses, and some individuals during the pandemic due to legislation like the CARES Act. However, these benefits did not extend to all essential workers. While this resolution would not extend additional benefits, it would offer a verbal show of support for these workers from the city for their sacrifice during this time of crisis. I appreciate your consideration and the chance to address what I believe to be incomplete and incorrect information related to the Fremont City Essential Workers Resolution. I'm happy to answer questions. We're immensely grateful to farmworkers, grocery workers, bankers, municipal workers, healthcare workers, nursing home workers, factory workers, and so many others who've held up our community and our country during this COVID-19 pandemic. This resolution is the minimum action that we can take to show our gratitude and support for their many contributions. We hope that the Fremont City Council will join us through this resolution by formally extending their gratitude, not only to the municipal employees, but to all essential workers who work and live in our city. And to respond to Ms. Reese's comments and then to Ms. Weiss's comments, um, first I also would like to make clear for the public and for all the council members, I am, um, a resident of Fremont. I was born and raised here. I'm also an employer. I've created jobs here in the area for individuals who work for my organization. In addition to jobs that I've helped create in California and the Washington DC area. So I understand this issue both from the perspective of someone who supports workers as well as from the perspective of someone who employs people. The increased wages that have been talked about and whether or not this is going to drive business away from the area is not grounded in fact. There have been studies that have been done, research that has shown that when workers are paid better and treated better, that is actually to the benefit of the employer. When you pay people better and when you treat people better, it reduces costs related to employee turnover and increase in productivity. There's no competitive disadvantage when you treat people better. Other employers would also do the same. To Ms. Weiss's comment about the possibility of there being some kind of change to the federal or state law, if there were to be a change to the federal or state law, that would not be a change that would only impact Fremont. It would be a change that would impact employers across the state or across the country. Therefore, meaning there would be no competitive disadvantage to any employer in this area should something like that happen. The other is that when we pay people better and treat people better, and particularly in times of crisis like these, we know that there is not only reduced turnover, but there's also reduced costs related to recruitment, retraining, and restaffing. I fully understand and appreciate this moment of crisis that we're living through and the concerns of area business leaders. I fully appreciate those. But I also urge us to ensure that we as leaders in this community and residents of this community are doing our job to ethically and truthfully and fully convey what is happening here and what we're talking about. What we are talking about is a resolution in support of workers. What we are not talking about is a change to the law in this city that would have a direct financial impact on employers in this city through the passage of this ordinance. So I'm happy to answer any additional questions and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Monica?
Yeah, I have a question. So you say that this is not a law and it's, um, you know, something that potentially couldn't be enforceable because it isn't a law. But in the verbiage and the language, section one says the city will pledge to transform our laws. So I'd like you to explain to me how this isn't the first step in moving towards that process when you say that this isn't a law, so it's kinda a moot point. When, again, the language in there says that the city will pledge to transform our laws. How do you explain that?
Sure, it's not a law, it's a resolution. It's written as such. As someone who advocates on behalf of workers, you know, I would hope that here in this city, like other places across the country, we would want to make our workplaces safe and the best that they can possibly be for the people who we employ. So, you know, in my capacity as someone who cares very deeply about the rights of people in the city and across the country, I should hope that we could pledge to try to make things the best possible conditions possible. But this is not an ordinance or a change to the law. It is written as a resolution and the request that's been put before this council is to pass it as such.
Madam President, if I may, and, uh, Mr. Kelly, to your comments, I think the city of Fremont, through the leadership of, uh, Ken Frost and the mayor and the administration, have done a lot of things already to ensure for the safety of our employees within the city limits, uh, throughout this crisis. So I think to a large extent, we've already done what we can do as a city to trans, you know, what, what we, what way we can transform to make it a safer and better environment for employees. We already have. Um, and, you know, we, we pass resolutions all the time supporting one thing or another. Um, and that's simply a statement of time of support.
Madam President?
Yes.
While the resolution may not have the force of an ordinance, it sort of, it doesn't sort of, it gives other companies that may want to come into the area or the companies that are in this area, the indication that maybe one of these days, this resolution may turn into an ordinance. And that's why they might back away from not expanding, from moving away or coming into the town. So I, you know, on that resolution, I think everybody understands that it is a resolution, not an ordinance, but they're in fear of what it can become.
On a simple, on a simple level, we're just getting.
Can I finish?
Sure.
Thank you. There's many local businesses here that have taken on the financial burden of increased overhead costs during the pandemic to ensure safe working conditions for their employees. I have not heard of any complaints of employees saying, "We weren't properly equipped. We weren't given this, we weren't doing this." Everybody has taken that, um, obligation and responsibility. And I, I say everybody because I'm fully confident from the letters that we have received here. I think that, uh, the people, the employers and employees, especially the employees, I have not heard anybody complaining. They might complain because they were having to work extra hours, but they had an increase in pay when they were working the extra hours. I really don't see any sense in this resolution. Thank you.
But the res- the, the resolution, we, we cannot enact as a city council any ordinances that does anything to the employment opportunities of our private business. As Ms. Ramirez indicated, that would take a state or federal law to make those changes. And as she said, that would make the state a level playing field for those kind of changes. We're just basically giving a shout out. And my only comment is, and no one has to answer this, but how many, how many listening on this call have chosen the click it option to pick up their groceries at Kroger or Walmart because they don't feel safe going to those locations? And instead, we're letting those essential workers do our work for us. They're taking the danger. And alls we're doing is, alls I think this resolution is doing is basically giving a good shout out and a thank you, huge thank you to these workers. If, if we could give them more pay, I would gladly do it, but we can't. And I would support our businesses in that regard.
John, I think you make a great point there. Um, when you say, "If we could give them more pay," I think we should and everybody is, is in favor of that. And I know from the other business owners that I've been in contact with after learning of this, um, that's a huge concern of theirs because, again, when I read the verbiage and the language in this, it says, um, specifically that there, um, enforceable protections for the essential workers exposed to additional risks from their work during the pandemic by providing for all workers, regardless of status, robust premium compensation. What is robust premium compensation? Who dictates that? And it says enforceable. So when employers hear that type of language, all of a sudden, a lot of red flags go up. When we hear enforceable, robust premium compensation, and there's no, there's no specification in terms of what that is, what that means, who decides it, who enforces it. There's a lot of vagueness and ambiguity here that all of us are quite concerned about.
I don't mean to interrupt, Jim, but I, I, I think the vagueness is good, honestly. I think the vagueness gives that discussion that you're bringing up to the table, which is very positive, what we think that would be. And the fact that the community can't, we can't do anything about that at all, you know, gives us the chance to have a discussion as time goes into the future about what that would look like. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
You know, and, and, you know, because you, you and I could agree or disagree on what we think is premium. But I think we could probably reach to a happy medium on that. And I, and I think that vagueness gives that opportunity to be, to have that open discussion, which is what we, I think we should have. You know, because I think you as an employer are more than willing to compensate your employees in, in a way that is best for them and looking out in their best interest. I, I have no question that you would do those kind of things.
Sure.
And I just, I think the resolution is basically, again, a big shout out in support of that dialogue.
Yeah, and, and I, I hear it. I understand what you're saying. And yes, it does make sense. I will say one more thing before, um, I stop taking up any more time. The underlying tone and the insinuations I read when I read this thing, and I've read it many times, is that employers aren't taking good enough care of their employees based on whoever the, the generator of this is. And as, I don't know if my letter's gonna be shared, but I, I honestly, frankly, take offense to that because if anybody knows me personally or knows my place is a business, I think that they would clearly see that I care deeply about my employees. I take very good care of them. They have long tenure and there's a reason for that. You don't, you don't get long tenure and loyalty from employees by abusing them, uh, providing inequalities, not providing them with personal protective equipment, which was stated in here. All of these things are quite frankly offensive to myself and to other business owners that read between the lines on what this is saying. And, um, you know, like I said, we take offense to it. I mean, you have to take this type of scenario, in my opinion, business by business. And if there are employers in Fremont that take this seriously, not only in the time of a pandemic, but all the time as we should, um, if there are some outliers that aren't doing that, then there are other establishments out there that should handle this type of stuff. OSHA, the federal and state labor laws, all of these things. So we're, in my opinion, it's oversight that's kind of beating a dead horse. And I know the, the recourse or the, um, the retraction is gonna be, well, it's just a shout out to our essential employees, our essential workers, which I happen to be, I, the folks that I work with happen to be. And it, it begs the question for myself and for the others that I have talked to in the community that own businesses, what is this all, what is it for then? If it's just a shout out, there's some pretty, there's some pretty damning language in here. Um, that could be, that could, you know, I guess perpetuate into something a little bit stronger than just a shout out. And that's what we're concerned about. Does that make sense to you?
Sure, sure, it does. And, and, and I don't, I don't think we're, I don't think the intent is to insinuate what you're not doing. I think it's to, to me, honestly, it's to insinuate, insinuate what you are doing and the continued support. You know, for example, um, we have a lot of, you know, the last reading we had, we had comments about some of our solid businesses in town, which already offer prevailing wages. I wholly support. They offer things like tuition reimbursement, which I think is awesome.
Sure.
In, in, I, in the ideal world, and I know it's not the ideal world, we could, we could, every business could do that. And, and I know it's not feasible and not realistic, but I think the opportunity just to say, you know, thank you and, and we support our workers in, in what they do. And, and the other thing that's been bugging me about all this is, you know, we have a lot of, and, and you're an exception, Jim, by the way. You know, we have a lot of CEOs of our, our corporations and, and, um, you know, administrators in certain positions in the city of Fremont. They don't live in Fremont. And, you know, we're, we're asking for a resolution honoring those who live in Fremont and work in Fremont. And we're, we're getting criticism some, from some business owners who, they don't live in Fremont. But this is, you know, and, and we want more, you know, and, and the majority of people are the essential workers that live in Fremont.
I think there's a lot that's within this. If, if we just wanted to give a shout out to essential workers, then a lot of this language should have just been removed. And I don't think anybody here would have ever, would have disagreed to approve it, but with the different language that's in it, it makes it hard.
Hundred percent agree.
Yep.
That's true. May I respond to Mr. Kelly? Um, Mr. Kelly, we don't know each other and, and I'm not sure what businesses you own. I hope, I hope that I frequent them because it's really good to hear that, that you have such high standards for your employees and for your business. Laws are not created to be a ceiling. Laws are created to be a floor. This is not a law. This is a resolution to spell out some things that are aspirational that could be supportive of essential workers who are in this city and in other places. This resolution, similar resolutions to this one have been passed here in the state of Ohio, in Toledo, in Lakewood, in Dayton, and in Columbus. And this isn't about the people who are doing the best job they can to honor the people who work with them and for them. This is about the people who aren't doing what needs to happen to honor the people who work for them. I've spent years advocating on behalf of farmworkers throughout this state and across this country. And over the summer, thanks to the help of, of Mr. Frost and of the mayor and others, we helped to distribute thousands of masks and hand sanitizer and other things to farmworkers in this area and farmworkers in other parts of the state. And I can tell you that not all employees are as fortunate as those who work for you. This is a request to consider those who are amongst the best treated and amongst the worst treated and to honor all of them for the work that they do and for all that they experience in doing that work. The other reality is there are thousands of workers across this country who've gotten sick with COVID. Some among us. And there are many people who have passed away from COVID. We're asking for their work to be honored. To Ms. Reese's point about what might happen or what could happen or what if this would happen, if there were to be any attempt to try to create a better law for workers that would be more than provided by state or federal law that this city council might consider at some point in the future, we live in a democracy where people have the opportunity to speak to their concerns, where employers would have the opportunity, like Mr. Kelly is doing today and others apparently have shared by letter, what their concerns are. Just like I have the opportunity as a resident of this city and as someone who employs people here to share my perspective about why things like this are important. So the maybe, might, and potentially, while I understand those things, the reality this were to be an attempt to pass something like an ordinance or at some point a, a law, there would be an entirely new process that would provide people the opportunity to engage in conversation like we've been engaged in in this meeting and in the past two ratings. So I offer that because I don't think that we can make decisions based on the possibility. So I offer that because I don't think that we can make decisions based on the possibility of what might or maybe could be. I think that we make decisions based on what is the reality and what is before us and what is before us.
Anyone else have any comments?
Hi, this is Pat Canham with the Sandusky County Economic Development Corporation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and I just want to say something real briefly. I just want to say that, you know, perception is sometimes a reality. And so from economic development standpoint, um, something like this, even though it is just a resolution. It can be misconstrued into something differently. And again, it's the perception sometimes becomes a reality. And I think we just need to be careful of that. I think like I, I forget who said it earlier. I think there's a way to certainly honor the essential workers. Without having some of the language in it that currently is. And I think that probably most people wouldn't have a problem with it if that were the case. But speaking on behalf of the many businesses that I've spoken to and talking from a business attraction standpoint. It, it does concern me a bit. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anybody out in the public, Ken, that is making a comment or asking a question?
No, no ma'am.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna go for roll call.
There's a motion to adopt by Councilman Leibold and a second by Elder. Yes or no vote, starting with Danny Addy.
Uh, yes, I mean, no on the resolution, sorry.
All right, let's, so you're a definite no?
I'm a definite no. I was telling you, yes, I heard you.
John Elder.
Yes.
Angie Reese.
No.
Chris Leibold.
Yes.
Chris Wees.
No.
Jim Slick.
No.
Justin Smith.
No.
Okay, so that is. Not approved. And Bob Gross, Stevie's here.
Yeah, what do you, you, yeah, you want, you want me to pass it over to Stevie now?
Yeah.
So we are all done with number one. Uh, Stevie, you take over at number two and I'll scan this in an email to you.
Thank you, Jim, for your comments.
Thank you, John. And to everybody there, thank you very much. I appreciate you hearing me. It definitely strikes a nerve when. We get into conversations about my employees. Cause like I said before, I care for them deeply. They know that. And those of you that know me, I hope you know that. Those of you that don't, I could just be blowing smoke, but. In your, in your eyes, but I do. And that's why it was very important for me to speak tonight because it's something that's near and dear to my heart. So I appreciate you guys hearing me.
And we're glad you came to the meeting.
Thank you.
And thank you, Monica.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next reading, Stevie.
I apologize for not being able to get on. It just wouldn't let me get into the meeting. So. First reading of the ordinance repealing section eleven sixty-one point zero five. Of the codified ordinances of the city of Fremont dealing protest against proposed amendments.
Madam President, may I speak as the law director?
Yes.
Okay, so. La, uh, October twenty-third, I provided you a copy of the decision, counsel. As to what happened in the case involving. One of the amendments that was done to modify the zoning for Kurt Hertz property. To an R three, uh, multifamily, I think is what it was, if I'm not mistaken. And, um, we took it to, to the court of appeal, they took it to the court of appeals. And I briefed the issue and so did Andy Miley. And the court of appeals in that decision determined that. This ordinance that we have currently on the books eleven sixty-one point oh five is in direct conflict with state law. I provided you a copy of the decision so you could understand what they said. It was a very short decision. And by that, I mean, it was a one-page decision. That's not, that's not very common to have a decision that, that just immediately says this is invalid. So in other words, what I'm telling you is that the court of appeals has determined that our ordinance is invalid. And because our ordinance is invalid, because it is in direct conflict, I am asking counsel to repeal it and take it off of the books. Does that mean we have any questions?
So we're gonna take this ordinance off the books, Jim?
Yes, yes, exactly. That's what a repeal will do. It'll take it right off the books. Does anybody else have any questions?
Is it gonna be replaced with anything?
I, we can always do that if we want in the future to do something new. But there's no, there's no plan right now to do that. And obviously it cannot impact the way the state law is drafted.
Okay.
So that means, Mr. Malley.
Yes.
That means that what we passed before. Is null.
Correct. But it had, it, it's what's, the better word, Angie, is it's void. Because of the fact that, uh, the, the, the court of appeals has already determined. That it is an invalid ordinance because it's in direct conflict with state law.
So does, does that mean that Curtis Hertz property is or is not zoned, um, M three or R three?
R three, I believe it, it meant that it went into effect. Now, we're talking about two different issues. If you recall, there was one that went to a referendum. This one did not go to a referendum. So we're only talking about his original property, I believe is what this is involving. And that is, that is currently, I believe in R three because it was not ever. Struck down. It was, we won at the court of, uh, at the county's court level. The decision came down that, um, Andy's, uh, Miley won in favor of him. And then they appealed what the court did there. And now the court spoke and I, when I wrote the brief. I echoed a lot of what Andy said, believing that it was in direct conflict.
Okay.
So what is the zoning now?
The zoning for the original property for Kurt Hurt is R three.
And what was it before?
I think it was R one.
It was R one with conditional use.
Right.
Now it's R three.
Yeah, and council, council voted for that, Angie.
I know, I know, but I just wanted to get the R's, you know.
Oh yeah, sure, absolutely.
Anybody else have any comments or questions about this? Is there any comments or questions from the public, Ken?
No ma'am.
Okay, so are we just going to have, this is gonna be the, constitute the first reading of this ordinance? And we'll move on to the next reading.
First reading of ordinance amending the pay scale for all part-time intermittent, temporary seasonal interim employees. And boards and commissions for the city of Fremont and declaring an emergency.
Do you wanna speak to this at all?
Sure. Um, so this is like I emailed, uh, council, uh, exclamation for the next few. This is just our annual ordinance updating the part-time and seasonal pay scale. The, the lowest pay scale that we pay for our seasonal help, especially at the rec center, obviously starts at minimum wage. And then the scale goes up from there. Depending on the job duties or the job, um, position that it is. And so every year we update that ordinance to adjust for minimum wage and then we, um. We proportionally adjust the rest of the pay scale. To stay in line with whatever ten cents, fifteen cents above minimum wage or fifty cents above, depending on what position it is. So, so this is just, we do this every year, um, putting it on council's agenda now. It won't be effective. Until, um, January first, because that's when the state minimum wage increases. So we're just getting it on council's, um, agenda now and, and to give us plenty of time to clear it by the end of the year. So.
Okay.
So no rush on this.
Nope.
Okay, all right. That constitutes the first reading of that ordinance. Uh, next reading.
First reading of the resolution authorizing the approval issuance of a warrant for payment of three thousand dollars to Wolfpack Tree Service. And declaring an emergency.
Madam President.
Go ahead.
This, this was a tree that we had in the city. It was in danger of falling on a resident's garage, a very large tree. What had happened was Steve Stutz, and I may have these dates a little bit mixed up, but Steve Stutz had contacted Wolfpack Tree Service to take them, take it down. On the twenty-fourth of September, being that it was such a large tree, we don't, we didn't have the proper equipment to do it. That's how big this thing was. He contacted them on twenty-fourth and they, they gave him a quote. And, uh, and basically told them they couldn't get to it for, you know, a couple of weeks. So Steve didn't immediately put the PO in. Cause I believe it was a Thursday. Well, Wolfpack Tree Service, uh, came out and did it Monday, uh, without telling Steve that they were coming out to do it. So, uh, basically they did what they were supposed to do, which, which is what we wanted. Cause it was, it was an emergency situation. The tree was in danger of, of doing some very serious damage. Unfortunately, Steve didn't get the, the PO in until the day after the actual work was completed. So I would ask if we suspend rule four on this to get Wolfpack, uh, Tree Service paid for this.
Hold on, hold on. Yes, Angie.
I was doing it the polite way. Madam President, I move to suspend rule four. Thank you.
Madam President, I second.
All right, I like this, girls. Angie makes a motion to suspend rule four. Angie Reese and Christine Wees, seconds. Is there any comments on the suspension of rule four? No, roll call.
Elder.
Yes.
Reese.
Yeah.
Leibold.
Yeah.
Wees.
Yes.
Slick.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Addy.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
John Elder moves to adopt Christine Wees, seconds. Uh, any more comment or question? Any comments from the public on this, Ken?
No ma'am.
Okay, roll call.
Reese.
Yes.
Leibold.
Yes.
Wees.
Yes.
Slick.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Addy.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Approved. Or Stevie, next reading.
First reading of ordinance amending appropriate since we're then local coronavirus relief fund two sixty-four and declaring an emergency.
Madam President.
Yes.
Uh, this is just a budget adjustment ordinance to increase our budget for the third, the third and most recent round of coronavirus relief funding. That we got, um, we got it just after our last council meeting. So I couldn't get an ordinance on council's agenda. Late last month. Um, so the third round for us was about five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars and some change. Um, and so this budget adjustment just allows us to continue to, um, spend those dollars on, on items needed around the city. And, um, and use it for expenses related to the pandemic. So I would ask that we suspend rule four on this one, um, so that if there is anything that the city, the department has or anything needs. The budget's been adjusted and we can get purchase orders out there and, and. And. I, I, I heard.
Okay. Anybody? Yes.
I said, I moved to suspend rule four.
Madam President, I second it.
Uh, Angie Reese moves to suspend rule four. Jim Slick, seconds. Any questions on the suspension or comments? Roll call.
Leibold.
Yeah.
Wees.
Yes.
Slick.
Yes.
Yes.
Addy.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Reese.
Yeah.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Denny Moody, Denny Moody, Denny.
He has been at times.
Moves to adopt, and I think Justin Smith, second. Any questions or comments? Anything from the public, Ken? No. Okay, roll call.
Yes.
Slick.
Yes.
Yes.
Addy.
Yes.
Elder.
Yes.
Wees.
Yeah.
Leibold.
Yeah.
Okay, that's approved. Okay, moving on, we'll go to committee reports. Uh, and I'm gonna start with Chris Leibold, Finance and Labor.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I guess when we're, uh, ready for our, uh, budget meeting, that'll be the next thing we'll have. Um, and I'll defer to the auditor, um, as long as him and the mayor are healthy to proceed and. We'll, we'll have it when we can have it.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Parks and Recreation, Justin Smith.
Madam President, I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Citizen Service Committee, Angie Reese.
I have nothing this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Government and Economic Development, Jim Slick.
Thank you, Madam President. I have nothing at this time.
Okay. Laws, Rules and Ordinances, John Elder.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. We had an open meeting, um, earlier tonight to deal with the new zoning policies. We'll have another meeting at next council, November nineteenth at six thirty, um, to discuss. Um, and then we'll discuss moving to adopt. Also want to remind that. We have a Board of Zoning Appeals position. Um, the term is expiring and if you'd like to apply, um, you can pick up an, an application in the Office of Engineering Zoning. During office hours and applications are due, um, December fourth at four thirty PM. Thank you. That's all, Madam President.
Thank you. Community Partnership, Christine Wees.
Um, the only thing I have is, uh, just a discussion, um, or a potential, um, ordinance coming up. Uh, in regards to tobacco use. I see Jamie Belcher is on. I don't know if she is gonna unmute or not. Are you there, Jamie?
I am here.
Okay, so, um, we're trying to get this ordinance together. I believe it maybe has been presented to Jim Malley to be written up in our proper format. That hopefully it'll be on our next, uh, agenda.
Yes, I, that's my plan to get it on the next, um, meeting.
Okay, do you have any comments, Jamie? Belcher.
If anyone has questions, um, like contact information. I have emailed that ordinance out everyone. I, um, the proposal, I do know, um, that Mr. Malley is waiting to put in the Fremont. Template or format that is being used. Uh, but if anyone has questions, please, uh, hesitate to contact me.
Thank you.
Jamie.
Yes, Danny.
What, what is this concerning?
Uh, tobacco signs for tobacco use and hotline, uh, to be posted at any place that sells tobacco.
Gotcha. Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Signage at different places that sell tobacco.
All right, all right, thank you.
It would be, um, posting of the Ohio Tobacco Line information. And, um, it would be free of charge. It wouldn't cost the city anything. We provide all the signage to all retailers. Um, and enforcement would simply be when we do our annual compliance checks and store audits. That if they didn't have it, we would simply just, um, give them new copies to post. So really nothing that the city would need to be involved in. So you get enforceable or any major consequence or funds, um, for not posting.
Okay, thank you.
Because, um, those, there's a lot of research and, uh, at least eleven percent of people, yep, thank you.
Okay, moving on, uh, Traffic and Utilities, Danny Addy.
Nothing really to report tonight, uh, Madam President, but thank you.
Okay, well, I'd like to tell you that I frequent the stop at Krogan and Wood. Okay, well, I'd like to tell you that I frequent the stop at Krogan and Wood every single day, and it's working out beautifully. It's so nice to not have to wait and wait and wait for the light to turn.
Exactly. I think about the only thing, unless it's already been done, Ken, is, uh, the, uh, taking out of the poles that are there for the light. I know that's gonna happen sooner or later.
It's, it's, it's coming shortly. Uh, Morsers actually can do that for us.
And I know that, uh, Father Remley, the pastor at Saint Joseph, has been very pleased with that situation, uh, so pleased. He's buying historic street signs for that area, and now he's gotta go ahead for the parking lot. So he is just, uh, more than happy and appreciative of what the city has done and, and, uh, Ken, uh, your endeavors also, so thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Kristi Bilger, I see you're on here tonight, and I wondered if you had anything that you'd like to say.
Um, the one thing I would like to encourage everyone is, um, to think about our, our small businesses right now, um, and to support, support them very much. I talked to Kuanis today, um, and stressed that as well. Um, obviously, it's a, it's a different time we're living in. Everyone is saying that. I would encourage everyone, though, to very much support our small businesses. They're the backbone of this community, and they very much need your help and support right now. Um, it's very, 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 very paramount. So please thank your small businesses, and remember, they're the people that sponsor things, give to your groups, support you and so forth. So, um, if I can share anything tonight, support small business, support local. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I see there's some other people on here tonight, and I wondered if anybody had a comment or wanted to speak about anything?
Yeah, Madam President, I'd like to, uh, my, my hand was first, uh, uh, first, Ken.
All right, we'll race after this.
I, I'll, I'll be real quick. Uh, I sent you, uh, an email, and I just wanna put it on your radar. Uh, bids have been out for three weeks, uh, and they close tomorrow for the demolition of the Jackson Avenue. We had quite a few people express, express interest. Uh, they'll close tomorrow. Tucker is gonna open the bids on Monday, uh, and then certify them the, the next day. And so at the next council meeting, we're gonna introduce or give you that ordinance, and we will be asking you to suspend Rule Four, uh, only because we put together a timeline for them to start the first week in December, uh, with the hope of getting that building on, on the ground or close to on the ground, uh, because people have been getting in that building, uh, and the holes keep, you know, kids are through, walking by and throwing rocks, and we had to send our streets department go down to kinda seal up some of the holes, and, and this is a project we wanna keep, keep pushing along. So I didn't want anybody to be surprised, uh, at the next council meeting when, uh, you see the ordinance, uh, for the demolition, and if you have any questions, uh, between now and then, you know, get ahold of me or, or Tucker Frederickson, but I just wanted to give you the heads up that that's, that's coming.
Bob Gross.
Yep.
Well, once again, and I know I mentioned this to you before, in the demolition process, whoever does it, is it possible to salvage something as a memorial?
Yeah, Danny, that's a great question. Yeah, so, uh, you're gonna see, so the, the demo, the demolition specs indicates that they've gotta keep as many of those big limestone blocks as possible, and I think keep, uh, a, as many of the stone bricks as possible to kinda reincorporate into, um, redevelopment down there. You know, maybe the red bricks can be used as a walking path. Also in three-ten Verture, uh, some of you have gone through there, and if anybody hadn't been through there, I can take you through there. There's those big, three, uh, wooden tresses that go across there. We are salvaging those as well, and, uh, and hold on to those and try to record, reincorporate some of that in, into the redevelopment. But, uh, now, because we're doing that and salvaging those, that's extra work, and so, uh, you know, that's, you know, it is gonna cost the bids go up a little bit, but I'm not sure by how much, but, you know, if you wanna see all the bid specs, that, you know, they'll be in the, uh, in the bid listing, they'll, they'll be in the engineer's office.
Okay, thank you. Ken Frost, did you have something?
I did, Madam President. Thank you. I just wanted to give everybody a really quick, a really quick update on Rossin Avenue. As you know, the, uh, the, uh, actual road construction has, has halted for the year. Um, however, you will still be seeing some workers in the area doing things such as, uh, some waterline relocations, gas lines. We have to bore under the railroad tracks still, and of course, our, our trees that we've taken out, we still got a lot of cleanup to do there. Uh, just so you know, we are, we are, we're not even close to being done. Which is fine. We're at, we're at a good stopping point right now, and we will resume actual paving and road deconstruction and reconstruction in probably early March, early to mid-March, hopefully sooner if the weather, weather cooperates. Uh, so I just wanted to give everybody a, a quick update on that, and, and also there's gonna be a lot more landscaping being done in the Springs. I know that was a question. One other thing that I wanted to bring up, uh, just for everybody, so everybody's aware, uh, we had voted on this, and construction is finally beginning for the bike trail expansion in front of Swartlander Park. You'll see a lot of construction equipment in the fishing access areas, kinda where they're staging. Uh, so the bike trail will actually now go, uh, from where the bike trail is now in front of Swartlander Park and linked to the downtown bike trail. Uh, that, that actually is going rather quickly. I, I honestly, I anticipated it being done by the end of next week, but don't hold me to that. They're going really fast on it. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up, uh, it's more for Mr. Elder than anything, uh, the tennis courts at Roger Young are finally being worked on. And, uh, and, and don't ask me any questions about it, because it's a real sore subject with me, but just know that they're being worked on. So they're finally out there, and they're guaranteeing me that they're gonna be done, like they guaranteed before, but they weren't. So, uh, we actually see some progress. So if anybody has any questions, feel free to contact them.
Yes, Danny.
Uh, Ken, I know I talked to you and mentioned you, uh, this before too. Rossin Avenue project, just a thought, the boulevards themselves, um, and I know you heard from, uh, Mr. Coons on this having Versailles boxes, which Versailles boxers are planner boxes. You'll see them up at Mayor Meyer Park, and I have a, uh, an idea that, you know, you could, uh, fill them through a seasonal flowers, like Cedar Point does, changes their flowers around. Hansi's in the beginning, geranium's in the end, and I know Angie and I would be more than willing to tackle that problem. We wouldn't have to back over, Angie. But, you know, just to do something like that, I think that would be kinda cool to, uh, liven it up a little bit, just a thought.
Well, Mr. Addy, I can tell you with all confidence that we, uh, are exploring additional options for that boulevard. Uh, we're, we're not certain that, uh, of course, it, it doesn't look good now because the plants are dormant. It looks like we just put dead sticks in the ground, but, uh, we're really not certain that the mulch is actually gonna be manageable, uh, for our streets departments, parks departments. I think it's gonna wind up all over the road. Um, obviously, we've got, uh, we've got some decisions to make on, and if we wanna do something different with that boulevard, and, and we're leaning towards the possibility of, of doing something completely different up there. So, like I said, everybody just be patient. This project, I, I know the administration, we, we, we've had several brainstorming sessions up here, uh, about how to make this better, and it's, it's kind of an evolving process. Just be patient, and, and when it's done, I promise you it'll be something amazing.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, Holly?
Hi, thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of things, since we're talking about parks. Um, I was stopped on the bike trail a couple mornings ago regarding the new, um, bike station that's at the corner of, um, Park Avenue and Hayes Avenue. And the, uh, water filler, the bottle, or the water bottle filler, um, these residents that live near the intersection pointed out to me is constantly running. And their concern is that, um, they thought that there shouldn't be any public water offered at all during COVID. So the question is whether there should be water accessible there at all during the pandemic? And the fact that it's, so I popped over there on my way back from my walk, and it's almost a constant stream, so that needs to be addressed. And, um, there's also some questions about some zoning issues with trees and, or not zoning, but, uh, property lines with trees that I encourage the city to look into with the residents along there, because there's been some complaints. And I just wanna say, with the conversation that went on tonight about the essential workers, I've said this more time, several times during the course of, legislation, government decisions, and, um, governing, you know, governing is difficult. And what happened this evening with the essential worker ordinance, um, I understand the way people voted and why council voted the way they did, but I truly hope that all of you go back to the table on this and find some verbiage that you can all agree upon, because I think it's extremely important for our community. Um, just like when, um, the fair housing ordinance was on the table, and that was voted down, and I don't know if anyone's readdressing that at this point, but I personally feel that those are two things that if rewritten and written appropriately to accommodate the city of Fremont, would only make our city stronger. And I just wanna say that we just hired a diversity director, and those two ordinances go hand in hand with the fact that we now have a diversity director. And going back to the table on those two ordinances will only strengthen our community if we get the verbiage right. So I just wanted to give you my thoughts on that. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Anybody else? Christine?
Yeah, I would, I would definitely agree with you on that, Holly, that I think if we have changed some verbiage, um, and rewrote, um, especially the essential worker a resolution that I don't think anybody here would disagree that we all support them. Um, I know many of us are related to one or are currently are one, um, but I think we all would agree that we do support the essential workers and all the work that they have done. So I just wanted to share that.
Agree totally.
I agree on that.
I just, uh, one more thing I just wanna add, you know, uh, Ms. Ramirez made a comment that, um, several of the larger cities in the state of Ohio have already adopted extremely similar resolutions, and perhaps that's just a little too progressive for a community our size. So please go back to the table on this one.
Anyone else? Chris Lightbowl?
Yes, thank you. Um, first of all, um, tomorrow, Clem Foose, who's a senior at, uh, SJCC, is, uh, going down to the state, uh, cross-country meet. Um, and he's the first, um, uh, cross-country runner at, uh, Saint Joe to make it down there in a while, so I wanted to give him a shout out, and, and there's a pep rally for him to tomorrow morning around eight forty, um, in the parking lot outside Saint Joe Parish. Um, so congratulations to Clem. Uh, second thing, uh, Madam President, I just wanted to commend you on keeping us virtual over COVID, because now with more people in city government coming down with it, I think it really, uh, shows a pretty wise call on your part. So thank you for keeping us all safe.
Thank you.
And, uh, finally, I just wanted to ask Bob and Ken if the Dora signs were ordered yet and when they were going in the ground.
Yeah, let me give you a door update. There's, uh, a, a list of things. We've been working with Dave Thornberry, uh, regarding a, a rack card that shows you the map and the Dora rules. Uh, that has been, purchase order has been in and, and sent to print. Kristi Bilger, uh, in, with Downtown is working on the cups, and the issue we're having with cups is if you get them pre-printed, it's a twelve-week advance time. So I think we maybe end up placing potentially two orders, the first wave of orders being clear cups and putting stickers on them. Uh, you know, with maybe, you know, kinda giving us time to get the cups with the pre-printed stuff on it. As far as the sign goes, we, we just placed, uh, Billy and I drove the, the route and kinda double-checked where we're gonna put signs. We're basically gonna have two signs that say Dora Boundary, No Alcohol Beyond This Point, or Dora Boundary, This Side of Street Only. Those are the two different version uh, of our signs. And so, yeah, we, we, we put that order in, uh, Billy and I drove the route, uh, worked on the signs. Dave Thornberry, uh, created the sign, so that order is in. Uh, what we decided is, uh, the city already has kind of the aluminum twelve by eighteen no parking signs, uh, but we're working with a local company to kinda wrap those in our Dora, uh, sign logo, uh, and that is kind of a, a time-saving measure and a, and, um, uh, kinda helps expedite it. Uh, Kristi Machine, um, they're, uh, designed the trashcans for us. Uh, they've got one mocked up, uh, kind of a, uh, kind of a hectagon-looking type black trashcan. We, you know, we decided kinda let the private sector businesses pop their stuff with color, but maybe the backdrop of the city stuff with black light poles and black fence and black Dora trashcans uh, is maybe a good blend. So, uh, we, we kinda moved expeditiously to get the Dora, Dora trashcans, cause, uh, Kristi Machines, you know, wanted the, the okay right away, and so with help from the auditor's office, we got that process cleared, and, and, uh, they actually wanna have the Dora trashcans to us kinda by the, the first of December, because they have Christmas presents that they're working on for, for a lot of their clients. They need to get done by Christmas. So, yeah, no, that's a, that's a great question. We think we're in pretty good shape. A lot of this stuff is, is two or three weeks advance. Uh, I don't know, we, we did get word back from Division of Liquor Control that our application has been approved. They had a couple minor questions and things we had to send them. Mostly formatting, they didn't like, we, you know, kinda laid, you know, laid out like the streets and how we laid out the, the, the street description. Uh, but we, we got all that done in a, in a day or two, and, and word came back, uh, I think earlier this week or last Friday, that the state has approved our, our Dora application. So, I, I think, you know, at this point, it's all in our hands and, and, you know, cause we have to adhere to the application. So the minute we get all these things implemented, we can go live. And, uh, we're about two, three weeks out on stuff, and, and so we're kinda looking at maybe the middle of December. We, we obviously want it known later than New Year's Eve, but I think we're maybe as soon as the, the, the second, second week in December.
Uh, Kristi Bilger, you have some, an update on the Dora, you say?
Yes, the cups have been ordered using all local purveyors, and they should be ready by New Year's Eve.
Wonderful. Okay, anybody else? I'd like to make mention about COVID again, because Sandusky County has turned red on the color chart, which, um, you know, means that we're on the high rise of COVID. So I'd like to continue to ask everyone to use their social distancing skills, and please, please wear your mask. Um, and if there's nothing else, I would, someone to make a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I have a question real quick.
Okay.
I'm sorry, uh, my name is Jim Posey. I'm from Sandusky County Public Health.
Hi, Jim.
So since you guys brought up the Dora, um, at the last meeting, we had discussed, uh, with Mayor Sanchez that we would have a discussion and send out a letter about those seller server trainings. Um, and I'm sure everyone is aware, uh, Mayor Sanchez and his wife have come down with COVID. So what I would like to ask, is there someone from council that we, at the health department, can work with to come up with these letters?
Sure, you can work, I mean, any of us would be more than willing. Does anybody wanna, uh, take it on or?
Would this be, um, what would the verbiage need to say in these letters?
Um, well, we would just strongly like to encourage, um, those businesses that have elected to be a part of the Dora, that they, um, make sure that their employees are aware of the ordinances that are in this, in the city, um, the regulations they have to follow, but some certain things that they have to look for. Um, and to make it easier for them, we've actually put that up on our website. So all that they would have to do is go to the, um, health department's website and choose from the multiple options that we have there. Um, and I believe at the last meeting, uh, it was discussed that they would send their certificate of completion to the health department. And that's all we were really asking for.
Okay. Yes, Danny?
I'm more than willing to help, uh, with this, but I would also like to see probably, uh, John and Chris, only because you guys have really, uh, delved into it more than I have. I have the time, but I'm more than willing to help as a team if, if, if you two are up to it, or if anybody else wants to.
I think it's a, cause it's gonna consist of is a couple people getting together to compose a letter and then run it by the mayor or Ken Frost or Bob Gross, uh, before it can be dispersed. Is that correct, Jim?
I believe so, yes.
So, is there such a thing that you could, um, compose this? We could review it, or do you want someone to join you in the compose this? We could review it, or do you want someone to join you in the composition of this?
I think it would definitely be beneficial to have everyone work on it collaboratively. But if that's, if you want the Health Department to come up with the letter first, and then have maybe like a little subcommittee of the council look it over.
Sure.
That would probably work as well.
Okay.
I can help him.
Okay.
He's going to probably be doing it in the daytime.
Correct.
Okay, so Chris, you know, I would say she would be good at it, but she works during the day. So I'll help you, and then I'll get back with Chrissy.
Okay, Angie and Danny, yeah, Angie and Danny. Christine, are you willing to help with this? Okay.
I can help.
So do you have access to our emails, Mr. Posey?
I don't believe I do off the top of my head, but I'm sure I can get it from your guys' website, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So if you want to email Angie or call Angie, her phone number is on there as well. And then figure out some type of way to get together or just email back and forth, or whatever works out the best for you guys.
I can give you my cell number, and you can text me, okay?
Okay, sounds good. All right, I got your number.
Okay, and then I can get ahold of Danny and Chris.
And Mr. Posey, is there any other places that might be advantageous for us to look at as far as verbiage, say, other cities pull up Dora, you know, Tiffin, Ohio, whatever, other little web places we can go or under the State Health Department? Where would we find additional resources that kind of help with that letter, so we don't miss anything?
I know I've worked with someone who is familiar with the Dora in Tiffin. Where to find information on that, I would assume, would be the city website for Tiffin.
Yeah, I think it would be best you come up with the letter. We take a look at it and see what we have missed, or if we have to reword something slightly, whatever.
Okay.
All right, we'll just kind of take a look at what you got, we'll add on or subtract or whatever we have to do, and come up with that perfect letter. And I might be calling on Mr. Elder and Mr. Libel, just in case I have a question, if that's all right. Just nod, please.
I guess, Danny, for you.
Okay, we got a plan, it sounds like.
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome. If there's nothing further, I would ask someone to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Christine Wees moves to adjourn. Chris Libel, seconds. Roll call.
Slick?
Yes.
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah.
Reese?
Yeah.
Libel? Yeah.
Wees?
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Good night.
Have a good night, everyone.
Everybody, stay safe. How do I get out of here?
I'll be in the ax.
Like my sales tax webpage, website where I pay my sales tax.
Who is that?
Both my emails on.
No, they cut out.